There you go. All right, I'd like to call the board of the December three twenty twenty five A A lower Southford Township Board to remind them that everyone to join me and put in the leadings.
I point the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to our first of two public discussion period on our agenda. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized? Thank you. All right, very good. We'll move right along. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Make a question.
All sections. Move to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Committee reports. So any here or this please?
There are no applications.
Very good. Park Board.
Let's close through. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Park Board will leave on January twenty seventh at seven P M. In this room.
Fire chief.
It's today's. All right. Busy month of November. Thirty nine calls. We had twenty nine today, ten night. Eight fire alarms for building investigation, four UMS assist and brush fires, uh, three building fires, accident injuries. And two CO detectors and gas leaks. One electrical fire outside, also investigation, standby, a dumpster fire, vehicle fire, vehicle rescue, and a plane crash, which was nothing in the Franconia. Uh, twenty one in Lower Southford.
Yeah, it was that plane air goes.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it was coded, you know? Yeah, we were doing the reports like, well, it was considered a plane crash, so let's, what's going on? Uh, twelve more in Franconia, two in Upper Southford, one in Lansdale, Pottstown, Skipback and Towne-Manson. We had a total personnel of three hundred and forty-two. We averaged eight point seven per call and we were in service for twenty-four hours, forty-eight minutes and ten seconds. Um, Santa Run is coming up in the thirteenth, so we are getting ready for that. Santa's getting his suits ready. Uh, we'll also be up at the, uh, the market this Sunday with Santa. Um, and go to the schools as usual, so we have our busy Santa, you know, month coming up for the fire company. Um, other than that, we're just, you know, on our business.
Be collecting food donations at the market as well as?
Uh, not at the market, just at the Santa run for Shepherd's Shelf as we usually do, so.
And, uh, the current needs of Shepherd's Shelves posted on your website.
Yeah, there it's always, they start updating it constantly on their website. We posting that probably next week as far as what their most recent are.
I know I always check their website or Facebook page, fire, so.
Yeah, no, we'll get it out there. I know everyone does rely on that, so. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next up, uh, Freedom Valley Medical Rescue.
Good evening. Uh, I would like to read a letter. Dear members of the board and Township Manager Joe. On behalf of Freedom Valley Medical Rescue, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for the generous donation of the twenty fourteen. Police Department Ram Pickup Truck. Your continued support and partnership mean so much to our organization and the community we serve. We are pleased to share that the vehicle has been officially in service for just over a month and it has already proven to be an invaluable addition to our management team. Its capabilities and reliability have enhanced our operational readiness and administrative efficiency in measurable ways. We would also like to acknowledge Edge Signs for their exceptional graphics work completed on the, on this vehicle. The design showcases our new logo beautifully and we are extremely pleased with the final product. This enhancement and our ability to proudly represent our organization within this community was made possible through your generosity. Thank you again for your ongoing support of Freedom Valley Medical Rescue. We deeply appreciate the board's commitment to public safety and to the suc- the success of our mission. We look forward to continuing our strong and positive working relationship with Lower Southford Township. With much appreciation, all of the members of Freedom Valley Medical Rescue and the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and just some, some of that. Uh, wanted to let you know that obviously I'm reading October's. Um, our November stats are not completed yet. So in the month of October, we had seven hundred and forty-four hours in the month. And of those seven hundred and forty-four hours, all of them were ALS at the Lower Southford Station. So that means there was a paramedic on duty for seven hundred and forty-four hours. Um, so we, we are very, very appreciative of your, of your generosity to make this possible for the community and for our organization. Uh, without your support, we could, we could not become successful as, as successful as we are. Um. Real quick, um. Harleyville Station, year to date, we've had two hundred and twenty-seven, or two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven, excuse me, dispatches, uh, year to date. Thirteen, thirteen hundred and forty-three were, um, dispatches within Lower Southford Township. So we've covered, um, most of those calls. Um, if not, ninety-five percent of those calls year to date, so we, we've definitely have, um. Turned over a new leaf since last year. So this time last year, we weren't doing so well, so, so, uh, thanks to your generosity. Um, we've, we've really been doing very, very well, so.
I mean, we appreciate you. Only a first of the ambulance has made its, in really good position now after many years and, uh. For the residents of this community and for Limerick where we serve, I think we have one of the first great ambulance services. And have a model for financing that, that maybe others will need to have, you know, yes, uh, could go, but it's. It's been a good cooperative relationship and we appreciate your leadership.
Absolutely. Appreciate you very much. Thank you very much.
I agree with that. Just thanks, can't thank you guys on the phone, particularly this year, my mom has utilized your services more than once, but everything has been, uh. Perfect to happen. Great to happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right, very good. Moving right along. Communications Committee, Mr. Shell.
Thank you, Chairman. We will be meeting here in December seventeenth, seven thirty P M. Uh, one thing I wanted to let order know is that our last meeting, we had an attendee who left wanting to be an associate member. So we appreciate that. She is here tonight, Jessica Bennerhoff, so we hope they consider her. The future board will vote in for associate members, start. Make sure, guess on this, that the jokes gets her.
That would, that would do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we'll be back in this room December seventeenth. Uh, we encourage all residents and listeners to attend. To help, uh, better communications with the town of the best residents.
Very good. That reminds me that all of the upcoming meetings for the various committees are located at the bottom of the agenda. Uh, including the Recreation Authority that did not meet in November as, uh, the normal meeting date was Thanksgiving. Uh, we can buy November, December, we'll be meeting, uh, December eleventh, uh, in this room. And, uh, the, uh, upshot of it is the golf course in November. I know it did very well. We don't have the final numbers yet, but the weather's very cooperative and the, and the weather's nice, like the golf.
Chairman, I may wonder, committee that we don't usually track a good event since twenty nineteen, uh, the Lower Southwood Industrial Development Authority, uh. Which we had to remind some members, there were members of, has reason to meet. We will be meeting next Thursday morning, the eleventh at seven thirty A M. Or it will probably be a brief meeting, but to, uh, allow for a loan modification on one of the loans to be made in twenty sixteen, uh, behalf of the authority, so. Ready for those who would be interested, that. Will be thrilling.
I'll check that out.
Yeah, you stopped in twenty nineteen.
Yeah. Wanted you not to show up at seven four. All right, very good. Uh, with that, we want to unfinish business. Uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, adopting year twenty twenty-six municipal budget documents as presented and posted. Uh, by the township. The, uh, the community news is?
No. General Fund Tax Increase is, uh. Twenty-six. Revenues are budgeted at thirteen million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Expenses at twelve billion, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. And a reserve is budgeted at one million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Expenditures are about a two percent increase over twenty.
Very good. We appreciate the whole of my, you know.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, congratulations to the staff. Joe. And all the year two has been here has always done a very excellent job on our budget and sound financial condition that we are in and say credit to. His, uh, fiscal stewardship of the community. We, uh, we ask a lot of our staff and we are able to invest a lot of projects and we get a lot of grants, but then we also need the matching funds and. Whenever we say, hey, Joe, we have money. Joe always knows we have the money and that's, uh, a benefit to the work he is, uh, stewardship, so thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-six, uh, budget, uh, per Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-seven.
Okay. Move to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Next up, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, enacting the tax rates assessments for the twenty twenty-six calendar year.
If it can't be more, I'll be out of the.
Well, it's difficult.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-eight.
Okay. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Uh, next up, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, accepting deeds of dedication for Spring Hill Drive, all for park access. Maple Avenue, Fox Hill Drive and Humpberry Lane. Michelle, are we ready to go?
That project is complete. Andy's office has prepared the deeds of dedication and I'm recommending that you approve them.
Good. Any questions?
Uh, here's that one. All question. This time of year, taking dedication of roads, who will be plowing it this year?
There is a maintenance agreement.
That will handle that.
That you will be acting upon next.
Fine. Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine.
Okay. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go say nay. Motion carries. Next up, uh, maintenance agreement for park crossing at Southford, which is the streets below the streets.
The main floor. I'll make a motion to approve the maintenance period for park crossing at Southford.
Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries.
Quick question. That maintenance agreement, does it say we're maintaining it or the developers maintain it for the year?
We are.
That township will maintain it.
Okay, for the snow season. Okay.
There is a contribution in here from the developer.
To all.
Uh, to offset the costs.
Okay.
For the township's maintenance this.
The reason behind that is he, he only submitted new roads for liquid fuels reimbursement.
Right.
Up until the end of October.
September.
So if you dedicate after that.
You missed the opportunity.
So they, yes, the lost revenue we would have.
Yeah.
And the maintenance period also. It's one inflation.
We good? All right. Next up, uh, three fifty-five Maple Avenue Trail Detail Waiver Request. Uh, this is the request to, uh, reduce the, um, pavement section of the trail, not the width of the trail. Uh, which is going to be a side trail maintained by the property owner. Any questions or comments in that regard?
I think we just go to the work session. The trail spec that we have, the township is really designed very publicly dedicated to a wide bike trail and also handle vehicles because it would be someone out. Away from a roadway. This is a little of a sidewalk adjacent to a roadway. At least in my construction experience, the fact that they are providing. More than adequate, uh, and mirrors really what a concrete sidewalk would be like in that area.
I agree. I have a few questions. Um, sure. Michelle has a couple of questions. They want six inches stone, that's all, four inches stone, three inches of asphalt. Are there any concerns about adherence to safety for all the vendors there?
For safety, um, there's no difference in the safety at all. And your second part of that was?
I'd say it's more like the quality benchmark, the restaurant trails. I would, you know, that's kind of, it's not, it's not much of a make the certain safety issue for me, but I was curious if. I could, well, the fact.
Um, well, uh, two inches of stone is two, two more inches of stone, but I, I don't believe it will. And I, I think it's important to note that. This, I have, will be, uh, maintained by the, uh, property owner as well.
Thank you. My other, uh, questions I had were regarding some of the slopes. You noted excessive eight percent slope. Um, can raise, but do you think it's a great, nice safety concern to search particularly pedestrians or unmodernized vehicles? The safety of pedestrians particularly.
There are allowances in the ADA requirements that you can go over in eight percent slope. And, um, as part of our review comments and the township traffic engineers review comments, we would ask them to mitigate that.
Um, pretty much all I have again. I think we'd like to talk to the gentleman, you know, or I spoke with this. This is something that I look ashamed of having had here really three years ago. First told you got this path, then we got to go instead of sidewalk. I really hope that the future board is coming up, consider. The effects of waiting with a sidewalk and the benefit that it brings to our community to become so much more walkable. Uh, with so many more resources that, you know, your company is building on the other side of town, but you can't walk there safe, maybe two years later. It's just, I feel like it was handled very well. I'm glad to see that folks, I'm coming home. I hope this promise kept. I hope to see, I hope to see something there.
I actually want to make sure we're, we never waved, we waved concrete sidewalk for pedestrian.
Oh, pedestrian.
But it accomplished the same thing. So whether regardless of the material, I don't think it would have been installed either way till we're at now, it's just, uh, I understand your comment.
I, I was more saying that we wouldn't be in the situation of that or had to not wait that. I agree, had to not wait that or deferred it, it was been a lot of anything said. Let's put that sidewalk down or they would have done that.
Right, in fairness though, they, they committed to doing it, they're going to do it, and I think our actions as a board has demonstrated time and again. Uh, the importance of building and is maintaining the trail system throughout the, the township, so I, I, I really don't.
All right, and I would make a motion to approve the, uh, waiver request for the, uh, just for the, uh, change in specification.
I'll second. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Question, sorry, they just didn't, um, provide the, a safer, because they'll be maintaining it. Somebody could have had an accident or something on their trail. Who would be held responsible?
They would. If they decide one.
They just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, all right, so it's all.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion is moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Next up, recommendation for contractor work for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five wheelbarrow mounted snowplow. That's put forth by a.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the, uh, low and apparently only bid, uh, for Robbie Little Inc. for fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ten cents. Per a bid of, you know, Wednesday, December third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. On to new business. Uh, I'll take a motion to advertise the twenty twenty-six twenty-two minutes pavement base repair contract. Something I think you would ever hear.
So moved.
Second. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Next up, motion to, uh, authorization to advertise the, the twenty twenty-six pavement marking contract. It's a joint contract with our friends at Frank Honey Township.
So moved.
Second. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go say nay. Motion carries. Uh, next up, motion to, uh, authorization to advertise the twenty twenty-six construction equipment rental with operator for band and wage contract.
So moved.
Second. Move to the second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries. Uh, next up, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Harleyville Volunteer Fire Company Financial Contribution.
Um, Mr. Chairman, you should, is the, uh, fellow word knows when we talked about, uh, in discussion of Harleyville Community Fire Company, they have long-term capital needs. Uh, related to equipment replacement, ladder truck coming up in the. Near, not too distant future. I'm not sure if it's near or a little bit more distant, but either way, it takes a while to build those things. Um, what we have looked at doing from a capital budget standpoint is of the money we receive from the fire tax. Allocating a hundred thousand dollars a year that we hold. In a separate line item so that we can accumulate that over a period of years. So then when the equipment comes due, we have money there available to pay for that. Um, and it's something that we've agreed to with the fire company, um, just as. To make sure the fire company in good faith can go out and look at ordering things, being very, very long lead times on the chassis and some of the equipment for this. To have a memorandum of understanding in place between the township and the fire company, uh, to that effect is what this document will do. There is also the out provisions that are provided within that, that we provided with a, a notice period of six months to, um. Let it know if that was to change forth by a future board, by other people, a financial situation changes, but I think it's really meant more as the intent of. The board to continue to help support the fire company in regards to those capital contributions. And with that, I would make a motion to authorize the execution of the memorandum of understanding and prepare.
Sir. Move that second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go say nay. Motion carries.
Something that, Chris, which one of them, but I think it is important to know, look at other neighboring townships that don't have the support for their townships. They're out there with their breakfast, the foods, and you know, that's time that additional time that their volunteers have to do. Makes it harder to get the calls and. You know, sometimes.
Volteers.
Harder to get volunteers, absolutely, and sometimes harder to get the equipment needed to. Glad to be, thank all tire five people.
Thank you guys for the support.
Absolutely.
There's a long way. Less stress for me.
We got, well, we, we would like you to stress about what you're actually doing.
Uh, yeah.
Putting fires and kites slash airplane.
That's right.
Crash. Not necessarily having to fund it, just as we have the angles. I mean, I think that's been a good role this municipality has taken. Um, add we have appropriately allocated resources.
It also allows us to, uh, give more Shepherd's Shelf over.
Exactly.
That's the total way around. All right, next up, a, uh, motion to authorization to advertise four minutes number twenty twenty-six dash zero one. Earn income tax increase for open space. This is a, uh, quarter point earning on tax. Um, which would go solely for the purchasing of open space, including the Allah property at four sixty still relevant.
Correct. I hate, important note, there is specific legislation, the open space tax that allows this. Um. This is something that some may say has been overdue for this community, but we've been managing to do well without it. Uh, our neighbors in Frank Honey and our neighbors in Skipback, uh, have allocated these resources and it does allow you to have the appropriate resources in place. To acquire space. Uh, we obviously, many of you know, have announced. An agreement on a property that we would need these resources. Hey, we're due preserve. Uh, this is a valid initiative. That, this ordinance would authorize that. Um, valid initiative, that, that language on the ballot. And I'll just make my first pitch of many, that anybody who's listening, we will need the support of a vote of yes on this in the May primary so that we can afford that purchase. With that, a negative motion to, uh, authorize the ad hoc and more twenty twenty-six oh one.
Sir. Move to the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go say nay. Motion carries.
People were delivering to, uh, to the audience for watching that the four sixty silver border property is, is a property visible. Main street across the wall.
Yeah.
Something, but a couple of confusion when Sturbridge first brought us a lot of presents.
Yes, if you.
Very good. That brings us to our second discussion period of the evening. Is there anyone wishing to be recognized?
Oh, yeah. Scott Bamford.
Yeah.
It is. Uh, that quarter percent increase. So that's essentially saying you're asking permission to go from a one percent income tax, local income tax.
We're a half.
We're a half. We have a half. So we're looking to go to three quarters.
Correct.
Okay. That's one thing. Second question. The thirteen million dollar budget this year. How much higher is that than like, like, or next year? How much higher is that? Two percent. And what's the cost? Roughly the same two percent? Everything going up like two percent?
No.
Okay.
No, there was things that didn't go up or may have gone down.
And we have maybe a bigger slush fund that one million dollars is a little bigger this year than, or next year than what was.
It will be bigger.
Bigger.
End of next year than I had budgeted.
Cool. Very cool.
Budget is served.
Right. I'm just curious. And then the last one, sorry, I need some more. The, the trail for three fifty-five.
Yeah.
What changed from their original submission like a year ago, maybe, to now? Like, why are they asking for a waiver now?
Exactly. The waivers are material and the original materials, the original frost action that they asked for.
Right.
Is basically what they're looking to build. Uh, there is some, some question about whether it's that or the bike trail specification.
Okay.
There are no, there is no other change in the depth of specification.
Okay.
Yeah. We're like, just the stone. Yeah.
Okay. So it's the same trail, same location. I think that everything's the same. Okay. Construction material. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
You should be. I've been led to believe that with the, uh, uh, new tenant, they will have that that will be the, uh, prompting getting in.
Okay. Thank you. I too.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be recognized?
I, uh, I would like to, uh, share with you. I, uh, I didn't have anything prepared prior to getting ready. I literally just spoke and so I'm gonna head this right here. I wrote stealth where I came out. I did want to say something, especially when I heard my family, but that's fine. I appreciate. Um, eight years ago, my heart did not grow or forever home here, Southford, same community where I grew up, where my parents still reside, where I spent my entire life. Shortly after moving, we were made a decision in my parents' neighborhood that left many of their neighbors satisfied, largely because they were unaware of prior discussions. At the same time, more neighbors began attending board meetings to voice their concerns with the township, not buying open space and letting it fall into the hands of developers. It was then I realized I could not complain unless I got the call. After attending meetings, I chose to run for supervisor, aiming to improve communication between the township and its residents. In twenty nineteen, I had the privilege of knocking on so many people, so I probably knocked on the door that year. And I learned so much about our community, rich history that holds, including stories from families whose ancestors interacted with the native peoples who lived here thousands of years ago. Listening to your experiences inspired me, served me with a greater, even greater commitment once in a while. To be honest, at the time of my election, I didn't know my new colleagues that well. I was the first new member to join the township in any capacity in many years. And my opponents campaigned vigorously against me. At my first meeting, Chairman Gifford pointed out, for the first time in the history of our township, we have elected to the board a magician. The magician, yeah. Those are some disagreements. I was relieved that my colleague, Chairman, said that politicians will interfere with the opponents. I also wanted to acknowledge our dedicated township staff. Without them, our township wouldn't function. They are the ones who answer the calls and meet residents face to face when issues arise. In my role as supervisor, I learned that a good day for literally every township employee is helping a resident. Lower Southford is truly blessed with such committed individuals. I can see their, of our staffers, it's just a big one. Thanks to their hard work and efforts, I'm proud of what we've accomplished together. I'd like to share some of those highlights. I'm grateful that my colleagues and I have worked together and having long discussions to find common ground, particularly during the challenging times presented by the COVID nineteen pandemic. I'm proud of our, our township responded, ensuring that operations continue smoothly during these trying times. I will forever be thankful for the dedication shown by our office staff, public works team and police department. The pandemic hit many sectors hard, especially the restaurant and hospitality industries. While being a supervisor is new to me, this industry was not, as I've worked in it since a young age. I was able to spend hours talking with restaurant owners about their struggles and after doing so, I was collaborated with our building zoning director, Rob Riley. And our township staff and our colleagues to help keep those businesses afloat. While our support was modest, I was gravely put in. I drafted my first and only residence to establish a communications committee with the support of the township's committee, the township staff and fellow supervisors. This committee's purpose was to enhance communication between the township and the residents. We've worked to evaluate existing channels, identify new methods and make recommendations to improve accessibilities. Some of the accomplishments the committee have done is the resident request portal, which is the online tool that allows you to report non-medical, non-emergency issues and share ideas and track status. A quick reference guide, valuable resource for residents and newcomers that provides essential information such as contacts, F A V's and local services. The committee has conducted surveys and built strong communication channels with residential facilities, ensuring that information reaches those who may not have direct access to it. I'm excited to see what this committee can continue to achieve and I'm grateful to all current and past members for their dedication. Since joining this board, I've advocated putting our meetings online, which I'm proud to say was accomplished. Not only can residents watch meetings live, but they can access them anytime. I consistently voted no against what I felt were unnecessary waivers and zoning amendments, that I felt primarily served the developers and not benefited our community. I've encouraged the board to consider recodifying the entire township to better serve residents and business owners and give them a say on the future. I'm proud of the junior supervisor program. I look forward to seeing what our township can learn from their new perspectives. Participating in the Parks and Trails Committee has been rewarding experience. I've enjoyed hearing ideas from individuals from all parts of our community to foster greater connections. Uh, one of the most common questions I've heard from residents was about acquiring properties to develop, to prevent development. Proud to have worked closely with these colleagues to make that a possibility. I hope residents will support the upcoming referendum for open space. If I am able to attend the next meeting, I will achieve perfect attendance, having never missed a work session, action meeting or special working. I'm proud of myself. I'm proud that I've been a consistent voice since being elected. As my turn came to an end, my mom was hospitalized and due to this, I initially doubted my capacity for the excitement of running another campaign. However, it became encouraging for many community members, including my mom, motivating me to reconsider. I was disappointed that leadership in my party didn't include my name on their list of nominated candidates to be endorsed, but I was grateful and surprised at the amount of support that I received on election day. Much has happened to me and my family since the primary election. My mother was rehospitalized for a few months, thankfully is being discharged or was discharged today. Um, good for, yeah, thanks. I'm looking forward to spending more time with my family. While I will miss many aspects being a supervisor, I'm excited about the time I'll have for my family, the new professional opportunities that I have, that wouldn't be possible in this capacity. I want to thank all of you who I've had pleasure of working with over these years. Joe has been a tremendous resource, always providing valuable insight. Uh, from that first phone call where I learned about political science, not the long evil township property. Joe has been always somebody to tell me. Uh, Holly, you've been incredibly, I'm thankful for your dedication to peers. I really appreciate Rob Riley for allowing me to ride along with the company during inspections. Um, and so I can better understand. Cecilia for sharing her expertise on the budget. Grace, Lori, Brenda, Patty, Mike, Lori. Grace, Lori, Brenda, Patty, Mike, Lori, thank you for your time and some hard work throughout the years. You guys really are at the heartbeat of this township. Lower Southford is fortunate to have stellar public works team led by Doug Jones. I appreciate the chance to know these hardworking individuals a little better each time I see them. And know them by name, which uh again, I think is something that I, another thing communications committee is doing is encouraging me to be to recognize. I love, enjoyed working with Chief Medwood and his phenomenal police force. I look forward to continuing and bringing snacks during the holidays. And appreciation of their sacrifice and their family's sacrifice. I cannot thank Michelle and Stephanie enough for your professionalism and patience with my questions, sometimes up to several dozens for certain projects. Appreciate that. Grateful to our council and for the collaboration. Uh it's great to know Jim Garrity and I appreciate Andy as well. I want to express my appreciation to all the committees, especially the planning, their meetings are very vocal. I used to attend them, but now I made their meetings available online, so I don't have to deal with all that. But I really enjoy being able to know our first responders, or in particular our firefighters, fire police and their families. I'm sure we missed banquet, probably have to crash a future one soon. I owe a great deal to my family for their sacrifices over the years. I'm eager to attend concerts, spend weekends without the agenda to read and research. And finally, I'd like to thank all supervisors I've worked with, past and present. Supervisor Gifford, great to see you up there. Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Burke, Supervisor Canada, Supervisor Shoring, Supervisor Press. I congratulate our newly elected supervisors and I look forward to seeing what they will bring to the board. I ran in twenty nineteen because I felt I could do a better job than others and I hope you will strive to do a better job than me for the benefit of our township. I look forward to the ideas and perspectives you bring and how they will benefit our community. I plan to stay involved with the communications committee and look forward to contributing in any way I can. But most importantly, I want to thank all the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve and for allowing me to leave a small mark of duty. Thank you.
Chair, you're next. Uh thank you. I have not written something out as eloquent as that. Um I've had the privilege of serving this community since two thousand and four. We moved here, built a house in two thousand and three, uh and I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the sewer authority in two thousand and four. That continuously serves the township here and the sewer authority on the board since then. Um. My interest in local service goes further back than that. Uh Mr. Jikowski and I know each other uh since nineteen ninety-six. Uh when I followed him, he was the assistant manager in Lower Wounded. And he moved on to more exalted places and more with township as manager. And I actually ended up becoming the assistant manager in Lower Wounded right out of grad school. We've had a very long last relationship and it's been a privilege and a real pleasure since I've been with the family. As well, and I have known each other since I believe nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight. We worked together at a job and worked in Upper Providence Township and she was with a different engineering firm at that time. So very long history also of municipal service. But with that and echoing Kevin, it's been a privilege to serve this community. It's been a privilege to see the great things that can be done with a group of people. You sit at a table and work together. Politics is not involved in that discussion. It's what's in the best interest of our community. There has never been, yes. Someone say it was a split board, we had a Democrat, four Republicans. I don't think there was ever once since that board was constituted that that became a, a talking corner issue. And I think it was a model for how local government should operate for that. Elections are one thing. Once people are elected. We are governing and governing is the important part of why you run for an election. Um I welcome our two new supervisors. I hope that so far the transition has been welcoming and open to you. And I have extended and will continue to extend anything I can do, not going anywhere. I live around the corner of Beth. Um and would hope to still have a voice if there's ever a need for any of that service. But I will further thank um the staff. We have, I, I've mentioned to Joe several times, we've always punched above our weight class. Uh with who we've been able to hire, starting with um, you know, hiring Joe as manager. Holly ended up being promoted up through the ranks here uh to lead our team uh on the administrative side. Tom Medwood uh is probably the finest chief from the Northern County, where they were able to hire Doug Jones after Syria off RV and so on in between. Uh Doug has brought a whole new level of expertise to a municipality that wasn't one of the larger by population or larger by budget. But we had the right aspirations and we know how to manage things well. And by doing that, we have, I think, the highest quality of services for a community of our type in this, this area. Served by one of the finest volunteer fire companies in the county. They're a privilege to work with. It's been a, one of the areas I've tried to focus on. And I've had to politically gain to know most of you well and uh hopefully we can continue in that vein. Then the work with Freedom Valley to set that up as a offshoot of Harleyville as it expanded and took on the new role. Those emergency services, as we look at what's the core function of what we do, health, safety and welfare. We don't do fire EMS and police well, we might as well not be in local government. You know, our roads are plowed first. Our, our, you know, fire company shows up as quick as they do, the ambulance does. And that, that's the true, the pleasure of having served on this board is to see the levels of service be where they're supposed to be. Um I will say that, again, I've been around local government a very long time. My job takes me in front of a lot of municipalities on a regular basis today. And I can't think of a better group of people who serve on a local board than what we have here. Starting with the, I think the voice of this board, and I'll say that the voice, when people come to talk to us, how they're treated and how we respond. Starts with uh Mr. Gifford. Um.
Here, here.
He's been a pleasure. Uh he was a, someone we all look up to and uh.
Great mentor.
Sadly, he was not able to serve any longer with us, but he was a great mentor and I think set that voice and tone. He was a voice in the library, which we all continue to support vigorously when others may not have. And uh.
Not me.
No, no, I'm not. Where we call this board as a whole was resolute when others outside of this community were not supporting it the way they should have, in our opinion. So um I thank all of them. I would hope you tell the staff the same. It's been a privilege to serve all of you. And I, I thank you for the opportunity and um look forward to seeing great things grow in the municipality afterwards. Thank you.
The community uh owes both of their grand to be very well. Time.
You can't say enough, you know, volunteering. You, you get involved in many things as you too.
I just want to say, as young as member of the board, I really appreciate your guidance.
I get, I get.
No, no, no. I mean, the new business. For your support and so uh getting started, there's a lot to learn and uh. I really appreciate the support and taking my call when I call and answer those questions with uh. Been great. And I encourage our new members to uh ask questions too, as they'll be questioned. For sure. Thank you for your service, gentlemen.
So I, I also want to thank both of you for, for your service. Uh I wanted to give this Chris's expertise and uh knowledge. In doing this position, uh in this position, uh there was comments made uh by our former lawyer that um. If Chris is here, you have to be here. And that, that's how much he knows that the knowledge is. But I want to really miss that.
And I will.
Yeah, we uh, I know you're not going far, but I want to get, so um, you know, I'll be, I'm sure I'll be in touch quite a bit. Thank you both for being uh, thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. So with that, we'll take uh.
Oh, we do have a need for a fair.
In the matter of.
Rules and personnel.
And personnel without the intent to return. So with that, we'll take any. Your journey. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, Tony. All of them. Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Joe.
Hit the go.